Thank you, Gary. I appreciate that. I convene the June 15th, 2020 Weathersfield Town Council Meeting. Councilwoman Pelletier, if you would, please lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Delores, please. Roll call.
Councilor Lauren Bello.
Here.
Councilor Flanagan.
Here.
Councilor Forrest.
Here.
Councilor Hill.
Here.
Councilor O'Connor.
Here.
Councilor Pelletier.
Here.
Councilor Penalo.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Marzarella.
Here.
And Mayor Rell.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Delores.
Everybody's here.
Great. I know, Gary, you said we had a couple people lined up for public comment, so...
Yep. The first one is area code 860-690-4576. Your microphone is on.
And Gary, just real quick, we're at five minutes, for those who may not have joined us in the past. Ten minutes for the budgeted public hearing, but five minutes for monthly or bimonthly town council meetings. If you would, Gary, could you just give me a kind of a fifteen-minute or fifteen-second warning? Because I don't, I can't hear the bell go off.
Okay.
That well, so...
Yep, and there's fifteen seconds left. I'll...
Yeah. Give me, and then I'll say something, just to, I don't want to cut anybody off short, but, you know, if you go thirty seconds to a half, thirty seconds to a minute over or something like that, we'll try and wrap it up. Okay. Well, thank you. Do you want to repeat that number again, Gary? I'm sorry.
Yep. It is area code 860-690-4576. And as a reminder, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, yes, good evening. That's my number. Kevin Sullivan from 79 Wright Road, Weathersfield. Phone number 860-690-4576, as you said. I'm a member of Bike Walk Weathersfield and was also, and a member of the bicycling and pedestrian advisory committee, and would like to strongly encourage that the council adopt the Complete Streets policy. It's a very good policy that was developed along with the Bike Pet Advisory Committee. I think it's the kind of policy that the town needs for sustainable, sustainable development in the future. And when I say sustainability, I don't just mean environment. I mean sustaining the kind of community that, that we have and that is desirable to live. Even though the policy was in part developed by the Bike Pet Advisory Committee, Complete Streets is not just about bikes and walkers. The benefits of Complete Streets are for all users of the street and an improved safety for motor vehicles as well. So I think you can understand the importance of adopting a policy like this. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. I appreciate it. And, you know, thanks for all your attention to bicycles, bicycling, and the advisory committee as well. We appreciate your, your service to the town.
You got it. Thanks for the opportunity.
Okay, the next number, and I apologize, I'm not sure I'm doing it in order that I saw it come in. I don't know if you're just listening or people want to speak. However, if you do, if you are just calling to listen, please let us know to pass and we'll move on. But the next number is area code 860-614-0759. Your microphone is currently live.
Hi, this is Rob O'Connor, 180 Main Street. And this is a rare coincidence that Kevin and I get to speak back-to-back like this, I promise. I'm also a member of Bike Walk Weathersfield, as well as the Bike Pedestrian Advisor Committee. And I'm kind of echoing Kevin's message. Just want to add that we're grateful that the council is...
Oh, we lost you. You still there?
Hello? Yeah, I'm still there. Can you hear me?
Yep, cut out for a second.
Yeah, so we were just, we're just grateful that the council is, is taking a look and hopefully will pass this Complete Streets policy. I just want to commend Peter Gillespie and Derek both for bringing this forward and kind of for their leadership in the advisory committee. And one of the things is trying to help people understand what this is. It's kind of a, it can appear to be a nebulous policy on the, on the face, but it, it has a lot of components. But as in the packet, you know, there's health benefits and there's a variety of other benefits for the town. But I'd like to focus on the economic benefits that this policy, that the result of a coherent policy when projects are put out to bid. It saves the town's money. It, it makes, it creates jobs. When an area is walkable and livable, you're going to see lower vacancy rates, people move around, more businesses coming to the, to the area. And it's not just, you know, in Old Weathersfield and the Silas Dean, but, you know, the walkability adds to people's home property values. There's a lot of research done like that, too, so. But either way, this policy also is, I was involved in the previous, another town's policy, and I think Peter and the advisory committee and Derek have done a good job kind of covering all the bases in it. It's got, it's got enough clarity and it's, it also has reporting features, which you want to, you want to be taking a look and report, at the reports and see how the town's doing. And it's also important to have a policy in place so that you don't need advocates like us, and you don't need people coming to question each and every project. You've got a culture where the town is considering these things when they're doing the project. So again, I just wanted to thank all the councillors and Gary also for having this on the agenda and considering the adoption of it. Thanks.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
About Peter and for Derek working with the, the committee for this and with stakeholders on this as well. We appreciate it.
Okay. Next public comment is 860-563-6923. Your microphone is live.
Good evening. This is Robert Young, 20 Cockermill Road, Weathersfield. At your last town council meeting, I know I had mentioned, I had heard Mr. Bob Woodware talk about how happy he was over the budget. And of course, I didn't hear about the budget until that point. Evidently, I missed something. But I did go and listen to your, your, what do you call it? The little movie that showed your presentation of the adoption of the budget. And I listened to it. And, you know, you didn't, you know, last year during the budget season, my taxes went up on my house. $592. That was seven percent. And I have no one else to thank but the administration that was in charge. They couldn't care in the least. They just raised our taxes and mine went up. Now, you folks, this new group, adopted in a sense almost the same thing as what they had. And even if I back up a little bit for a moment, a year ago, when the budget was adopted, Mr. Hurley and Mr. Rell voted nay on it. Nay. Yet this year, Mr. Rell, who's the only member of that old group that's up there and now mayor, he votes for the same amount of money. Seven, four hun, less than $379,000 more, and he votes yes. It really shows a heck of a sign of you, of your no vote the year before. This year, you should have pushed it back and pushed it back hard. But you failed to do that. And, and I think that's pathetic on the part of this new town council. It was bad enough. We had years after years of Paul Montenari and Amy Bello, who were raising our taxes left and right. And then when you came in, Mr. Rell, you should have pushed it all back. But you didn't. But all I can say is at least you kept it at where it was. And I hope next year, you really push it back, because you might have this, do some extra planning to do that. I've given you a number of suggestions on how to cut back on our running of this town. And I didn't see it pop up at all in this past budget. All you, all you did was raise us by $379,000 from the prior year. And I think you should have gone way back on those dollars. Also, I noticed in the, in that same meeting, there was a discussion and you called it the, that the town, and I'm going to read whatever the heck this thing is. It says that the town council will create an ad hoc committee to determine the feasibility of alternative revenue solutions, so forth and so on. Why do you, why do you keep talking about finding more revenue solutions? Why don't you talk about, let's find some ways of cutting our costs? I mean, I think that's, that's what management would do in a corporation. Yeah, they're looking for revenue, higher sales. But they're also looking to cut back costs. And who do we have? We have three members, one council member from each political party and the town manager. What a joke that is, having those three people. I think back at a year, a couple of years ago, when they had the Charter Commission. Charter Commission, the former town manager was in there, he was running the show with those members of the charter revision. And it was, if anything came up that he didn't like, he downed it. He downed it because it, it was, it'd be something he would have to face. You should have had three different people that had no dealings at all with government in this commission. And they would put the pressure on making decisions, and then you would have to live with it. Here, it's a conflict of interest on the part of the two political parties and the town manager. Who in the world, what rulings will they find that, that are going to be acceptable? Or what rulings will they find? Because they're going to have people coming to them complaining. On the other hand, if you had three single other kinds of people making the decisions on this committee, then you guys would have to live with those decisions. So I really think this is a huge conflict of interest for you to, to have this ad hoc committee. I listened to your two other speakers just before I got on, Kevin and Rob. And they spoke about the, some kind of policies, adopt some kind of street policy for bicycling or whatever. Well, let me tell you, I ride the roads and I see these people zoom right through the stop signs. They don't respect the rules of the road. And, and we, we people in cars, you know, we have to be careful and watch out for these people. We should take them off the road. They should be back on back roads, not on these main roads. And and there should be some kind of, there should be violations for people who do that. But I know people drive with cell phones up their ears in Weathersfield and no police catch them. And there's a lot of other things like that that happen. I understand, Mayor, my time is up. Thank you very much.
At the end as well. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep, yep.
And just looking, Mayor and Council, that was the last for public comment for the beginning.
Okay.
Excuse me, I have two letters of support for the, the streets. One is from Royal Graves of Prospect Street. I write as a resident of Weathersfield to express my support for the Complete Streets policy that will be presented at today's town council meeting. A great deal of work and effort has been put into this policy, which I believe will, over time, if implemented, improve the character of the streets in Weathersfield and make it more enjoyable to travel throughout the town, whether by car, bus, bicycle, or walking. And the second one is from Carol Bruce, from Stillman Walk. I am proud of the work done by the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, as it leads to a safer and healthier Weathersfield citizenry. That's it for, for my bicycles.
Great. Thank you, Delores.
Yep.
Appreciate that. And then, did you have some other letters you wanted to read into the record?
I could, yes, certainly, I could start reading some of them. I have from Colleen Madal, Madal. She, this is from June 4th. She missed the last meeting. She lives at 124 Wheeler Road, and she's concerned about police policies in our town and state. I've recently become aware of eightcan'twait.org, a website that highlights eight policing strategies, policing strategies that we must implement to allow our officers to safely police our town. Data shows that implementing these eight policies can decrease violence by 72%. There are two. One, ban chokeholds and strangleholds, require de-escalation, require warning before shooting, exhaust all of the means before shooting, duty to intervene, ban shooting at moving vehicles, require use of force continuum, and require comprehensive reporting. I'm curious if our town already has any of these policies in place and/or if there has been any initiative to implement these by our police chief and the town manager. I hope our town leaders share my concerns about the continued police brutality, especially against our black community. I hope Weathersfield can lead our state in implementing these strategies. Please consider implementing these policies. Please check out the very informative website, www@eightcan'twait.org. And then I have another one from Lori Thrulon. It says, and all of you have received these today. These are the ones I got today, and I've already forwarded to you, so you do have them, so that you can read at your leisure also. Members of the Weathersfield Town Council, I woke today reading a racist rant from one of our neighbors here in Weathersfield in one of the Facebook groups. It was a great motivator to put my thoughts forward for your consideration. While this one person does not reflect our town, it causes me to ask myself how our citizens would like to be viewed. Are we kind? Who are we kind to? Are we welcoming? And who do we welcome? What does it mean to feel welcome here? Are we working on being anti-racist? How would someone in the town learn who we are as a community? Over a year ago, Anthony Vega Cruz was killed here in Weathersfield. If you do a Google search, this is the one, one of the stories that you will find about Weathersfield. Whether or not people feel that shooting a young man for a vehicle violation is or is not acceptable, we have never come together as a town and asked ourselves what we may have learned so that it never happens again. I recently learned that the officer who shot Anthony resigned from the Weathersfield Police Department. While I'm happy to hear that he is no longer on our payroll, it is disappointing to think that to date, we have heard nothing from the police chief, the town manager, or the council as a follow-up. I also learned that officers were finally wearing body cameras. Again, I'm glad to hear this, but why, why not make the statement? The town is not welcoming and kind until everyone feels that way. It's not safe for me or for anyone until it is safe for all people. Now is the time for change and asking the following, the following. What are our practices that may be damaging people of color in our community and those who visit us? Are we being transparent about these issues and actively working on making necessary change? And if so, how? What is the process for transparency and accountability to citizens of Weathersfield who deserve a progressive, thriving, welcoming community for all people? Is our police department attending to concerns about the statistics that WPD stops to a proportionately number of people of color in traffic stops according to the Connecticut Racial Profiling Prohibition Project? If so, how? What are the institutional, cultural, and systemic policies and procedures of the Weathersfield Police Department or other town departments that negatively and disproportionately impact people of color? Who is in charge of assessing and monitoring these things? What training do, what training, excuse me, what training disproportionately impacts people of color? Who is in charge of assessing and monitoring these things? What training do town employees receive to recognize that there is a problem? What is the process for reporting this? And who does someone report them to? Who follows up to make change? Is Weathersfield Police reviewing policies and getting necessary training in the areas of racial profiling, de-escalation, body cam usage, use of force continuum, and comprehensive reporting? Have we reviewed policies about chokeholds, strangleholds, shooting into cars, car chases, shooting as a last resort? What policy should be banned and what is the process for doing so? Are there monies that we can reallocate, reallocate to address community concerns that may be better served by social workers, case managers, or healthcare professionals rather than burdening the Weathersfield Police Department with these issues? And that was from Lori. Do you want me to read the rest of them later?
How many more do we?
Probably about six.
Why don't we do two more and then we'll do the...
Okay.
In the last...
Okay. All right. This is from Janice DeRoberts. I am commenting in support of others who have been speaking up about needed changes to town policy on police matters for the past year. Among other areas, ideas, people have advocated for, one, making public WPD union contracts, two, identifying situations that may be better served by social services rather than police, and shifting funding to support the change, and three, instituting an independent citizen review board. These are common sense areas that deserve the council's timely consideration. Thank you. And then from Krista Reamel. Members of the council, it cannot be denied that the shooting of Anthony Cruz Vega last year fractured our town in ways that have yet to be repaired. The numerous Weathersfield groups on Facebook, while vocal, are not in appropriate places to rationally and effectively discuss how to move forward as a community in a way that ensures all members feel safe as well as heard. At this time, our entire country is facing its own great challenge, and our community is where our work must begin. I ask that our leaders take clear action to facilitate the conversation that we must have in order to repair the damage that we can, that it can be fixed, but also to address the damage that is irreparable. In this way, I include not only the adult residents in our town, but our youth as well. We must include black readers and others whose voices are often not heard until it is too late, and even then, they are heard conditionally. Please take actionable steps with transparency to all of our, in our town, so that those who want to participate in efforts to heal our town and move it forward can do so. Respectfully, Krista Reamel.
Okay.
Okay.
Delores?
Yep.
We've got a second round of public comments ahead of us.
Okay.
In that time, did anybody else call in, Gary?
I see no other number listed, no.
Okay. Good. We'll move down the agenda for council reports. Anybody have any council reports for tonight? Yep. Hang on a minute. Oh, Tyler.
So the Youth Advisory Board met on June 4th. They gave away a $1,000 scholarship. Each year, they do a scholarship to a graduating senior who goes above and beyond in volunteering in the community. They're gauging interest for fall programs, just, you know, if we see some sort of change of fortune and everything goes back to normal, they're still preparing for fall programs as if things are going back to normal. The Parks and Rec staff, you know, as we discussed before, they're being very creative with program alternatives. And if you're looking for something for your children to do this summer, they're recommending to visit the department website. I know one of the examples they, they gave is actually they're having crafts for pickup. So if you want to do crafts with your children or something, you can come pick it up and do it with them. They're still doing their library summer reading programs. And the great thing about that is that if you're in grades three through 12, you still have your school-issued device that can have to be returned for the summer. So you could actually participate in the library summer reading programs via your Chromebook. So, and that's going on for both kids and adults. So anybody in town can participate in reading programs this summer. They're looking to partner potentially with schools on a meal program. They're still exploring a bunch of possibilities on how they can continue to help during these tough times on that. They're communicating with schools on if there are any mental health needs, obviously, with how unprecedented these times are. It's always tough to tell, you know, what's going on with kids. It's tough to gauge how they're feeling when you can't actually be there with them. So they're just communicating with schools to see what they can do. They hope to still do a back-to-school supplies drive. Obviously, too early to tell right now, but as of right now, they're still preparing for that. They still have carriages placed outside of town hall if you want to drop off goods. The hours are eight to 4:30. Just make sure to call ahead of time so they could pick it up, go on or even going out or getting damaged. They applied, so they applied for two grants, both that we approved the process of. The first one, they applied for earlier, and we might know this summer, which is a little bit ahead of schedule. The second grant was submitted on June 8th. We can only accept one of both of those grants are going to really help the Youth and Social Services Department. And Erica did a great job on that. Ryan Barassi, who's a senior at Weathersfield High of the Youth Advisory Board, won three awards. He actually has been attending the commission meetings since he was in middle school. So him leaving this year will be big shoes to fill, but congratulations to him. And they're still tossing around the idea of, you know, what to do to try and honor the seniors. Obviously, diplomas were mailed out a couple days ago, and we had the motorcade. If the governor gives any guidance on potentially there being a live summer event, that would still only be students only to comply with the numbers. It would be now over for friends, unfortunately. So that's what they've been up to.
Great. Thanks, Councilor Flanagan. Councilwoman Pelletier?
I attended the Housing Authority meeting on the 8th. So the Housing Authority was able to obtain a loan under the Paycheck Protection Program. And they got about $140,000. They've been able to keep all their employees employed during this, you know, COVID shutdown. The office staff has been working from home. The maintenance workers have been coming in, we'll be about halftime, but the PPP loan has covered their, you know, everyone's salaries. They were anticipating having a number of tenants be unable to pay their rent because of the, you know, so many people losing their jobs or having their hours cut. But, which is one of the reasons why they applied for the loan. But they ended up, only three tenants so far have missed any of their rent payments. That extra $600 a month for unemployment has helped a lot. So they anticipate that... That extra $600 a month for unemployment has helped a lot, so they anticipate that PPP loan being forgiven in full. And, let's see. So, right now, they do have, they're be going back to the office part-time, working, some working from the office, some working from home. They have a social distancing in place, but appointments with any tenants are by appointment only, and the director anticipates that will continue until there's a backseat for effective But they are still able to meet with tenants, it's just, you know, by appointment. They're also keeping track of all their expenses for the PPE and disinfectants and the Plexiglas they've, they've installed in the hopes that they'll be at least partially reimbursed by FEMA. And that's about it.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess that would be a question for Gary. I mean, maybe we can keep an eye on that, talk with Anthony Dignati on that, if any of those purchases would be eligible for FEMA reimbursement. Maybe everybody keep track of, I'm sure all departments are keeping track of what they're spending, but that A slipped through, so hopefully we keep an eye on that and just make sure that FEMA reimburses, or at least we submit for FEMA reimbursement on that.
Yep. The, as a reminder, the Housing Authority isn't one of our departments. They have actually a separate login for the FEMA website to gain access to funds, so they have to track their own separately as part of, as part of the process.
Gotcha. Okay.
Not to say we wouldn't help them if we can, if we can.
Yeah, makes it a little bit more challenging.
Yeah, they have to go through their own process first and get denied before they can apply under us.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other council reports? Or, Councilwoman Doris?
Uh, yeah, I mean, Mike, you and I both attended the Human Relations Committee, which had significant conversation, I think that's the stable least, related to, of course, the, you know, the death in Minnesota, but even more broadly about racism, the way in which minorities are treated, not just in Weathersfield, but more broadly, but even much more specifically within Weathersfield, and then what steps are we going to take? What steps can we take? What steps don't we know about that we should be taking? You know, all that sort of conversation, research, development of a better society in Weathersfield. So, those are all things that the committee is working on. The outreach is ongoing. I'm sure many members around the circle of faces that I'm seeing now are doing their own outreach to understand and be more understanding of the situation of minorities in this country, and, and so is the committee. So, the committee will be working on a set of steps to determine, to likely present to the council about how we can ensure that our brothers and sisters and Americans and non-Americans are treated equally and fairly. So, Mike, if, feel free to add, you were there for the entire meeting, and I thank you for coming to that meeting. It was thoughtful that you were there at this time in our country. And if there's something that I, you know, certainly missed, certainly, of course, you know, it was not intentional, but that's going to be an ongoing conversation and a large one, and to find some meaningful action to turn the tide, so to speak.
Yes, I appreciate that, man, and, you know, I, I want to task that group and others in town with, you know, coming up some ways that we can, you know, get more people to come together and feel safe. You know, a lot of those, I read every single one of those emails that came in today, and, you know, and I know Doris is going to be reading them to the record. Some of them had mentioned how they don't feel safe, or their, their friends don't feel safe, and some even said they do, they wouldn't even want their, you know, student or TA to drive in this town. You know, it does make me feel good. So, you know, if there's a way we can, you know, bridge that disparity or, you know, the differences between two sides and multiple sides to come together. I'm going to be looking for, not the, the Human Rights Commission to come up with some ideas and some, some ways we can do it, but others. I'm going to continue with what Councilwoman Maureen Bello had proposed and done last year, and I think I told you this at the Human Rights Meeting, that we, Gary and I had all the intentions of having those community conversations going. You know, it was planned, and we were talking about it in February. I remember standing in a parking lot with you, Gary. We were freezing, but we were talking about it, and it's like, how can we get this thing off the ground? And sure enough, not even a month later, you know, we kind of all went into shutdown mode right then. But I do plan on engaging the public in a number of ways, and I look forward to not only hearing from the public, but from those around this meeting, well as the Human Rights folks to come up with some, some ways, meaningful ways that we can, you know, build a trust back with, not only with our police force, but with, you know, others in town. I read that same exact Facebook post when I woke up this morning. I couldn't believe what I was reading. It actually sickened me to read that, but I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I'll note, there are two, I believe, but can be confirmed by the town clerk, two positions that are vacant on that particular committee. Currently, that committee is an all-white committee, probably not, not just that committee, but that committee itself should probably have some more diversity on it, or should have some more diversity on it. And, and that's not to say that the other vacancies that are available, you know, should, we should continue to aspire to create diversity on those as well. And with that note, maybe, Mike, you know, kind of through you to, to the town clerk, might not be a bad idea to get a list of the committees that have vacancies on them too, so that we can all work toward that, that cause of having a good representation of our town in our town's leadership.
Thank you, man. Appreciate it. Yes. I'll ask Doris to do that.
Thanks, Mike.
Anybody else? I gotta zoom, could we go through? Anybody else? Or council reports? Oh, Representative, or Representative, Councilwoman Maureen Bello.
That's wishful thinking. I have some comments, so if there's other reports first, I'll let them go.
Somebody else? Somebody else have their hand up? Okay. Council comments, then. Sure, please.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mayor. I want to start off by saying how inspired I was by the students in our community for organizing the peaceful protests in Weathersfield on June 5th. You know, they protested, obviously, George Floyd's death, but also to bring attention to the systemic racism that exists in our community. I was there, I stood with them, I marched with them, and I am definitely willing and want to learn more and to be able to act and be a good, a good ally to that, to the community. I did send the email to you and the mayor and the town manager, asking for your consideration and beginning to engage our community in those conversations again. I'm glad to hear that you're doing that. The town manager and I, we really tried to reach out to small groups of people in our community last summer and fall, and we did have difficulty, honestly, having community members meet with us. So, I'm hoping now, the environment has changed, and people will be more receptive to the conversations, and so that we can have some meaningful dialogue about race in our community. The other thing I asked in that email from a couple weeks ago was that we do have the Human Rights and Relations Committee, you know, create a community action plan to, to challenge the systemic racism at the local level, and I think it's really important that part of that conversation, we bring in the police department, the libraries, and the schools, because there's really issues at all these different levels in our community. We've, I've personally felt it in the school system, so I think they need to definitely be a member at our table. And like Councilor Doris said, many of our boards and commission appointments, they expire June 30th, and that's annually. We have about a third of our boards and commissions expiring June 30th, and I would challenge our Democratic and Republican town committees to actively recruit a more diverse slate of residents to fill these vacancies. You know, that's the, that's the task of the screening committees of our town committees, is to recruit and screen members of our public to serve on boards and commissions, and I think race should be one of the, the, you know, ways we, we try to be more inclusive, but there are other ways that we can do that as well. You know, we have people with disabilities, we have different religions, different socioeconomic classes, so I think we need to be more mindful overall of how we find people to serve on boards and commissions. And then, totally moving on to a different topic, this past Friday was the Weathersfield High School motorcade graduation, and it ended with students being recognized at the high school, and I'm so proud of all the students that graduated, including my daughter, Sarah. And I just want to thank the faculty and staff for their support and the hard work that they put in to make the day memorable, because it really was a great event. The video of the motorcade and the reading of the names of all the students is on the Blue Eagles YouTube channel, so you can see that. And, Councilor Flanagan, I'm happy to tell you that on July 6th, Monday, July 6th, the class will have an in-person graduation. It'll be in two sessions, one at 9:00 and one at 11:00, so that it can fall under Le Monde's requirement of under 150 people congregating outdoors at one time. So, they will have the speakers at that time, the valedictorian, salutatorian, class president, principal, will all be able to give their speeches at that time. And then just finally, our sixth and eighth graders are also celebrating their step-ups, and so I wanted to congratulate them and their families, and again, thank our school system for finding an innovative way to honor those milestones too. It's just been a difficult time for everybody, and I appreciate all the work of town staff and Board of Ed staff in making these events special for the kids.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other councilable comments? Being none up.
Looks like Dan, how does he end up?
Oops, sorry, Mayor.
My, pardon me if this isn't the right time to ask or not, but I kind of forgot, it's been so long. I did have a request of the town manager in that, and I would like, for the benefit of all of us in the council, if we could get a listing of all the existing contracts in the town that are coming up or are set to either be renewed or expired by the end of the year, I think it'd be useful to determine whether or not it makes sense to either try to renegotiate these contracts and/or go out and bid. And so, I was wondering if, Gary, if you could possibly generate that list for all of us to take a look at and do our due diligence and fiscal responsibility as we look at these and find out if there are ways for us as we move forward, because every year is a budget year, and as we move forward to start being fiscally responsible day one after the budget and not wait until March of next year.
So, Mayor, if I may, just for a point on clarification, because you kind of broke up there for a second, so it's a list of existing contracts that are expiring at the end of the year?
Between now and the end of the year.
Okay.
And either expiring or up for renewal, or if we have any that are just on an evergreen renewal, where they just automatically get renewed, I'd like us to be able to evaluate all of them and know what they are before we renew anything.
Yep.
Good.
I can put together that list.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I just got to toggle back and forth, so I'm sorry if I missed anybody. Okay. I will just say a couple things. I did want to mention, yeah, real quick, the graduation ceremony. A couple of us were there as well. We did see Sarah Bello and, you know, and actually, former councilman and now Board of Ed member Kenny Lesser's daughter as well. So, the two got to graduate together. Didn't walk, well, I guess they did, they walked over the, the stage, got their photo taken. It really was a great time. Councilman Mazarella, O'Connor, and myself were there, and it was good to see. Believe it or not, it was pretty well organized. The parents, it was crazy to see kids not with other students or friends in their cars. They, they really took the social distancing and staying with their own family members to heart, and it was great to see, because as they drove by, not only did you get a chance to congratulate the son or daughter who graduated, but you had to congratulate the parents as well. I don't know how many of them, we told Dan that, you know, they got dropped off and they were running after the car, saying, wait, Mom, wait, and they're, the parents were leaving, you know, no, you're on your own now. So, it was actually pretty cute, and it was a great ceremony. I won't say, you know, much about the one that's coming up on July 6th, but there are two. There's one at 9:00 in the morning and then another at 11:00 at Weathersfield, and that's just for the kids. I think there's going to be some speeches by the class president and the valedictorian, as well as the principal, Maureen. Is, also, this month is typically the mayor's charity. It started four years ago, two years with Mayor Montanari, two years with Mayor Bello, and this was the, the first year of my mayor's charity ball. Of course, the actual ball did not happen, it would have been last Friday as well at the Country Club, but this year, they are doing a virtual charity donation. They're doing it multiple ways, you know, direct, different ways to support with a long signed purchase, as well as a raffle coming up this week for, I believe, a couple trips to some nice destinations. The mayor's charity ball actually provides funding for three charities here in town. It's a preschool scholarship program, which is always, you know, a, a need. We do have many folks that don't take advantage of the preschool program just simply because of cost. This would help supplement some of those costs. Also, for our students, there's a weekend meals backpack program, and that is for, you know, kids who don't have the, the resources at their own home for properly nutritious meals. This does provide that for, for the students. And then finally, a seniors' fresh produce initiative. You know, many of our seniors can't get out to the grocery stores or even to our own food pantry. This does provide fresh produce for them so that they can be eating healthy. Couple of us, Councilor Pelletier and Pentelup joined me and town manager Gary Evans last week as well at the boarding. I know a couple other council members wanted to make it. The rain was coming down pretty hard last Thursday, and it was tough to get it off, but some of us waited it out and got a chance to go up on the rooftop deck of the new boarding development on Silvestine Highway. It was great being up there. Got a chance to see not only the Silvestine Highway, which actually was kind of busy for Thursday night, but also got to see the former Puritan area, which has been demolished for now, probably about six months, but there are development and activity going on there for the two medical facilities that are going up. All in all, you know, looking at that as a, a good sign that some development is coming up on the Silvestine Highway in that area. Gary, I don't know if I need to do it now, or if I can move it over into other business, but we do have the proposal to move the dates for canceled two meetings, one in July and one in August. I guess I'll give you kind of a prelude to that to now, and then we'll make the actual official motion in other business. official motion in other business.
Yeah, it probably belongs under other business.
Yep.
This way you could do a discussion if there's any questions at that point.
Do you want to add a, you know, a position under 3A or three for that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll move to add in an agenda item 3B, discussion of council summer dates.
Second.
Need a second, Pat Pentelow.
Gary.
Second.
There you go.
He said it. I heard him.
My headphones aren't working like I think they are.
Okay. Dolores, did you get that motion by Forrest and Pentelow with a second? Thank you, guys. I appreciate that. I noted that in three, now it's 3B. We'll move the dates around. Okay. Anybody else for comments at all before we go to Town Manager?
We need to make a, we need to vote on that.
Oh, oh, yeah, we did. Yep, need to vote on that one. So motion to move or open the agenda to include in other business, item 3B, which will be to take up, you know, date of summer, how did you say it meant, summer?
Discussion of council summer dates.
Sounds good. Motion's been eight and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Aye, side it. Thank you, both Matt and Amy. I appreciate it. And then Gary?
Yes, sir.
Town Manager report.
Thank you to the mayor and council. Just a few items to quickly update the mayor, council, and residents about. The first is the effective this week, starting today. Town Hall has opened with limited hours by appointment only. And so any visitors needing access must contact the appropriate department to make the appointment. In order, in preparation for the appointment, there's a reminder that the main entrance will be unlocked, but again, it will be by appointment only. A staff member will greet you there and check you in in order to meet the state of Connecticut's contact tracing requirements. Masks are required for all visitors. The town is not providing masks. So if you do not have a mask, we will ask you to either reschedule your appointment or if you have it in the car, you can come and get it. But masks are required. There are markings located on each floor by each department, both within the department and outside of the department. This way we could accommodate individuals with appointments. We are trying to space them apart, and we recommend that visitors show up no earlier than five minutes prior to their appointment to ensure that we can meet social distancing. The setup in our hallways and the way traffic flows within the building is kind of difficult and can be kind of tight and congested. Again, a reminder to visitors that if you've had any COVID-related symptoms or any sickness at all, high fever, cough, congestion, or shortness of breath, that you consider or that you do not enter the building and you consider rescheduling the appointment. We're essentially chaperoning individuals within the building, so you can't necessarily wander from department to department. So in the case of if you're going to, the best example is the tax collector's office, and you also might need to stop in the assessor's office. We recommend that you inform, if you're going to the tax collector first, inform the tax collector that you also need an appointment for the town, for the assessor's office. Town staff will help coordinate those appointments, so you're not calling multiple places. But it's important that we have coordination to ensure we meet the requirements within the building. Also, whenever possible, and we know this is very difficult, but whenever possible, please try to limit the amount of family members that you might have to bring into the building or for business purposes, how many other employees that you have to bring with you whenever possible. Public restrooms are going to be available on the first floor only. They will be locked on the basement and second floor level. We're doing this to reduce the amount of cleaning that has to be done on a regular basis because we are using our staff and custodians to make sure that we're hitting all of the high-touch, high-contact areas on a regular basis. Depending upon your.
Hey, Gary?
Yes, sir.
On that particular topic, what was the consideration? Because if you sort of funnel everyone into the same room to go to the bathroom or whatever, does that have also the other effect of funneling everybody into the same room? If you use, I thought I heard you say.
Oh, for the bathrooms?
The number of bathrooms, so.
Yeah.
You know, if people go to the bathroom, I'll use the same bathroom.
Right. We'll control the flow into the bathroom, so there won't be 15 people lined up to go to the bathroom. But we wanted to make it, again, part of this is not only safety for the residents or the visitors coming in, but also safety for staff as well. And so when you know there's high traffic going on in one particular area, it's either to, it's easier to control and maintain the flow of individuals going in as well as the cleaning.
Okay. Just a thought on that.
Yep.
I'm sure you understand.
Yep.
The thought.
Sure. And as always, we appreciate everyone's patience. We're trying to feel a lot of this out. The goal was to open as soon as we possibly could for a number of reasons. One, people have been waiting and need access. Town Hall will still remain accessible via phone and email. Staff is still working to try to communicate. We've been encouraged by the state, and we're continuing that encouragement with staff to be or with visitors to use alternative opportunities to gain access to whatever they need in Town Hall. But there's, we understand the circumstances where you have to physically be there to do it. We appreciate the visitors, residents, and businesses' patience in having to wait and now how we're doing it going forward. Tax season is right around the corner, and we tend to get a large volume of individuals coming through the door. A lot of this is trial and error to make sure we can control that flow in an appropriate manner. We have all the, not all, I shouldn't say all because there's always something you miss, but we have many of the Plexiglas protectors up to protect both residents and staff coming in. The other news that I wanted to mention is effective this week as well. The Weathersfield Library opened for limited services for what's called holds pickup only, and that's by appointment. So individuals can call forward and say what they're looking for. The library has come up with a very creative way, in my opinion, to meet all safety and to make stuff available for residents to come in based off of appointment, pick up their items, and leave with very limited contact and touching of any additional space other than where their book is going to be kept. And then they'll wipe the area down and they'll load up the next person, the next person's pickup. So it was pretty creative. And again, Weathers, residents and businesses are encouraged to continue to use the online services that are available on our website as well as calling. The other quick comment is that as a reminder, and this has been out for a couple management reports now, I don't know if it's updated yet directly on the website, this week, per union contracts, begins Town Hall summer hours, meaning we will be open late on Thursday night, but we will close early on Friday, and everyone's kind of adjusted their lunch schedule to make up. So it's the same amount of hours, but we've actually increased flexibility for evening, which has still been a very popular request over the last 90 days, even though a lot of people had the ability to work from home. They were in fact working from home and couldn't necessarily get here to do what they needed to do. So summer hours begin June, this week, and then approximately August 21st is the last week that it will do. And we'll monitor that and make it available. Because it is appointment only, it provides us an opportunity to make sure we're staffed adequately. With that, I will follow parliamentary procedures. I want to yield the remaining moments of my time so that Peter Gillespie, our Director of Planning and Development, can give you as the council an update on Sustainable Connecticut, Sustainable CT. This has been a project that has been ongoing that Peter and staff have been working very diligently on to try to analyze some of our, you know, environmental awareness, conservation, efficiencies, and there's some updates that Peter wants to give you. And I think we have a target in August to try to apply and successfully qualify under Sustainable CTs for programming. So Peter, with that, I'll hand it over to you.
Thanks, Gary. Good evening, councilors. I will be real brief. I think in your packet, you may have received a memo dated June 11th. I'll be very quick and succinct. I just wanted to give you a sneak preview. This application is due at the end of August. So we're coming down to the final two and a half months or so to file this. In summary, this goes back to April of 2018. The council at that time voted to participate in the Sustainable CT program. Unfortunately, we have not had the time or the resources to pull together the relevant information, but we have been working on that over the last three, the last three months or so. Real quickly, there are nine categories where we can get points towards the certification. The local economy, natural resources, cultural activities, planning, transportation, infrastructure, public services, housing, and then lastly, equity, which you were talking about a little bit earlier this evening. There are a couple of different certification systems. There's a bronze certification and a silver. We are attempting to qualify for the silver certification. At this point, there are just about 50 communities in Connecticut that have gone through the certification process. Only 14 of those qualified for the silver certification, so it's something we are striving to do and hopefully we'll be able to accomplish that. As I mentioned before, the deadline is August 25th. On pages two, three, and four, there's a sneak preview of where we think we can qualify for the point system in all the various categories. I won't bore you with all the details unless you have some questions, but we have some areas of strength. One of those is transportation. Another is planning. The other is public services, where we can garner a significant number of points if the information is pulled together succinctly. So we are fortunate. We have received an interim from the Capital Region Council of Governments, who will help us over the next few weeks to file the certification and to give us some insight on where we can improve and strengthen our application. But I just wanted to take a few minutes since this started with the council back in 2018 to let you know that we're coming to the finish line and are pretty hopeful that the certification at the silver level can be accomplished. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions, but I just wanted to give you a status report. So if you do hear about this over the next few weeks, you'll know what we've been talking about.
Peter, they might not have anything in their packet, so I'll make sure to the council that you get the summary document that he's discussing. But if you have any questions in general about the, I mean, what he just talked about, which wouldn't necessarily be in the summary packet all in all about the program or competitiveness, we can answer it.
Thank you, Gary, and thank you, Peter, for that. Yes, if you could send that, I was just looking to see if I had it. I need to. That'd be great. Dolores, any town clerk communications?
Hang on, Dolores, you're on mute.
Okay, okay.
There you go.
All right, I have, we're doing dogs now, licensing dogs in our office, and we're asking residents to send in for them still, and most people are doing that. And we've been using, so we've been asking them, it's been extended, their days from June, just June 30th, but it goes all the way to August now, the end of August. So not the end of August, it's the end of July, so that we have two months to get all of our dogs licensed. And as I walk around town, I see that there are a lot, a lot more dogs than I think that we registered. So we're working on that. Also, we're working on the election legislation. The legislators went back to see, to work on something for us. I haven't received any information yet, but they are intending to blanket the, all of the boards, all of the Republicans and Democrats, the people who are registered in parties to be, get an absentee ballot application in the mail. When they send them back to our office, we will then send out, they, we will have the ballots actually sent out to them. Obviously, people, there are a lot of people who don't want to come out in this kind of environment with the COVID-19, and they have said that illnesses are illnesses, whether they're anxiety, if you have diabetes or cancer treatments or any of these things that people may have, that will allow them to use the absentee ballots legally. So that's a very good plus for a lot of people. And I anticipate we will have a lot of people responding to that. And they're also trying to see if they can do it again in, for the November election. So there's still a lot of things that are fluid in these, and what's going on in our offices, but it's a lot of work getting everything together for all of the ballots, and it'll be a big, a lot of, a big chore to get them all out in time. But we don't, we've never missed any of our elections, and everything has to be in by election night in my office, and it's, and then they can only be counted on Election Day. We don't count anything that comes in after it, and we don't count anything early. So we only, the day of election on August 11th, we will be having people counting at Central, counting at Town Hall. And the same in November, we will be counting, we only count on Election Day. That's when the only time the ballots are open and the votes cast. So it's the same as if you've gone to the actual polling place. There's a lot of instructions about making the polling places safe and having everybody wearing masks to come in, and we'll have a lot of, there's a lot of things going on to separate, and most of our areas will have areas that are, that people can be distancing the way we are supposed to. So we're trying to do it both ways, and hopefully it works well and helps the people out a lot. That's about it.
Great. Thank you, Dolores. Yeah, I know, having worked on a number of campaigns my entire life, you know, I often see folks and say, you know, would you like an absentee ballot? And without getting the door slammed in my face, they politely say, you know, I voted for 92 years or whatever, and I'm 92 years old, but voted in X number. I still plan on being there at the polling place on Election Day. So, you know, and just make it as safe as possible for a lot of these folks who would take voting, you know, seriously, so much so that they would never vote absentee ballot, but, you know, show up to the polls themselves to cast their ballot would be good. Just one question for Gary. You know, I got the dog license, and I know, Dolores, you and I have talked about that. I do have to get in there and do it. For those that can make an appointment to go in, that's fine, but I did see, and you had mentioned that a number of people are mailing it in.
Yes.
And, you know, sending their information in. You'd be mailing their dog license back to them, to the.
Yes, we do. Most of them have actually been giving us return envelopes with postage on them.
Okay.
So any documentation, if their babies have to be renewed and all that, any papers that they send us, we send them back when we give you your license and send that back. So we don't keep any of the documentation. We have to get it back to them.
Yeah. My question for Gary, would that be FEMA reimbursable? That's something that we would not have anticipated spending money on, you know, postage back to the dog owner. You know, I'm just thinking, how many, typically. You know, I'm just thinking, how many, typically, how many dog licenses do we have, Dolores?
Probably around 2,200 dog licenses, but most of the time, people would come in or send an envelope. We don't really incur any really a lot of financial.
Okay. Again, if you would mail one to our house.
Yep.
Mail it back to us.
Yep.
Just so you're aware, though, the, the line from FEMA is essentially if you had, in that example, postage already in your budget, you would have to expend your entire postage line item before you would consider even, they would qualify it. So it's one of those things that, you know, if you have even $500 in postage and this costs you $100 more, it wouldn't be reimbursable. Doesn't mean we won't try, it just, we know it'll get kicked back.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Council action. I don't believe there's any ordinances, resolutions, appointments, or resignations at this time. We did not have any unfinished business. I see Peter's still on the line for the complete streets policy. We did have two folks call in about it, but Peter, if you would, can you give us a little bit of background on the complete streets policy and proposal that's before us?
Certainly. As was stated earlier by a few local residents who have participated with us on the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, we work also closely with the Capital Region Council of Governments. There's a parallel effort to develop the regional complete streets program throughout the metropolitan area. So we were able to piggyback on that effort and utilize some of their consultant's time to help with some input on our policy as, as it was drafted. The prime author of the policy is an engineer, Eric Gregor. He was the catalyst for forming and writing the draft. Just so you were aware, I believe this is draft number eight of the policy, so a lot of input, a lot of time has been spent fine tuning the document that you have in front of you this evening. In a nutshell, the document is, is a policy statement that brings the complete streets philosophy to the table when we are talking about and or considering infrastructure projects in the community. Not all streets, I would say the, the minority of streets would be considered for complete streets improvements. We are working on a parallel effort as well to develop a bicycle and pedestrian plan. That plan would be the guide for which streets should be considered, so that document would come into play after the policy is adopted to identify those streets where we would consider it. There is, at the very end of the document, basically an exemption page, so as I said earlier, it's a policy, it's not a code, it's not a regulation, it's not a mandatory philosophy, it's a policy that states, let's consider these improvements where and when they are appropriate. The cost impacts are part of the consideration. If the improvements, to make a corridor, a complete streets corridor, don't make financial sense, that's one of the criteria that could be considered when looking at these improvements. As was stated, a complete streets policy, it just basically asks us not to look at just bicycle improvements and pedestrian improvements, but also look at where transit improvements could be considered and where safety improvements for motorists could be considered as well. And it should also consider all ages and all abilities, so handicap provisions are also a part of the complete streets philosophy. As I said earlier, the document has been well vetted by many people. We did distribute it pretty far and wide as it was being drafted and has had numerous provisions made to it. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions, but I wanted to give you the broad overview of what a policy like this should consider. I should also note that, I think in the memo that was attached to the policy, we've listed some of the surrounding communities that have already adopted a complete streets philosophy. The State of Connecticut Department of Transportation, obviously, as I mentioned earlier, the Capital Region Council of Governments, but also Blassambury, West Hartford, Ralph Windsor, City of Hartford, Portland, Connecticut, Simsbury, and Enfield are just some, a few of the communities that have gone out and adopted a complete streets philosophy. So I think that's the Reader's Digest version of what we are asking you to consider.
I'll add New Britain to the list, too.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. Did anybody have any questions for either Peter or Gary on this proposal? Deputy Mayor.
Peter, just a little bit further on the exemption section. When I read through this, it appears that the various parties would consider any exemption, and then if I'm understanding correctly, it's up to the town manager as the traffic authority to make the final decision. And which one of those groups would be the group that would talk about the financial feasibility? I see you have the town engineer, town planner, police department, and director of physical services, but some people may feel it's cost effective to do a project, and others would be adverse to that. And I'm just wondering how someone like myself would be able to provide input to whether I thought it was feasible or not.
So there is a, a public comment provision in, in the exemption policy, so I suppose, you know, to answer your question, and obviously not just for you, but for anyone else in the public community who would want to weigh in, it's a short window, it's only a 10-day, 10-day, excuse me, 10-day window. I think we might have had a larger timeframe earlier on when we had various drafts of this, but I would suppose that would be the, the timeframe in which those comments could be provided. You know, I do have to, you know, speak for the town engineer, he is extremely cost conscious about all of his projects when he is putting those budgets together. So I would imagine the town engineer, obviously, as well as the town manager, would be the gatekeepers of the financial side of these projects.
Correct. It, it would be, it would be a review and a recommendation from staff. Derek is very good at looking at alternatives. Keep in mind that these are based off of projects that would have to be approved for funding, so the council would be approving the work related. So the recommendation would be through, and you are by all intents and purposes a stakeholder, and the council is a stakeholder group, and the way it reads would be, essentially, it will be, one way or another, it comes through you because you would execute any contracts for any work being done, you know, and, I'm just trying to think of situations where it wouldn't. Off the top of my head, I can't think of any, but ultimately, any large transaction or major work would come through the council anyway, through process.
And you feel that, you feel the language, the exemption language is strong enough to provide an out if there was a certain amount of people, significant amount of people, maybe that were adverse to spending that kind of money for the walkability portion of the project? I'd hate to see a, a large project, the, say, like Highland Street paving project where there's a certain amount of sidewalks being put in, and I wouldn't want to be put in a position to vote no on the project because of a small portion of it being sidewalks that I didn't feel was worthwhile. By the time it gets to a vote, it's pretty much a done deal, so I'm just wondering how, how we can ensure that we have an out, need be, but if you, if you feel the language is strong enough, then I guess I'm okay with that.
I mean, the other, in response to your question, this is, as I said earlier, it's a policy statement. It can also be edited as we go forward, and since it's a first time for us, I would imagine that as we go forward and learn from our experiences, there may be some fine tuning at a point in time to, to deal with that. And, and it's not just financial feasibility, it might be environmental, there might be impacts if you're widening a road, you put in sidewalk, that you're, you're having to impact floodplains and wetland soils and things like that. So I think there are other factors that would also make a project infeasible to go forward, not just the, the financial side of that. And also, you, you mentioned the Highland Street project, there's also the Wilken Hill. The State of Connecticut actually has a percentage requirement that they have to include in those projects for complete streets, so this policy, just sort of following up on their policy, and I would imagine that most significant road reconstruction projects, we would, we would look to the state to fund those, we just do not have the resources, other than our maintenance programs, to fund a larger, significant project. So they would, in fact, have to have that complete streets incorporation.
Good point, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Pelletier.
I have a question, and I'm, you may, you might have mentioned this already, and I might have missed it, but what are the benefits to the town of the Sustainable CT certification? And is, you know, do we get access to grants or funds to offset, I assume it's that projects under this complete streets policy might, there might be an additional cost to, you know, a project? Is that something that the Sustainable CT certification will help out with funding-wise? I'm just, I'm just trying to piece it together.
There are really two different things. There is, we do get some credit towards the Sustainable CT certification if we have a complete streets policy, but they're not sort of one in, in the same. In answer to the Sustainable CT question, you had, there is a funding mechanism within the certification program that we can apply for. It's not a lot of money, it's not as significant a pot of money, but it does provide us with the ability to pursue that. In terms of the benefits of the complete street policy, I mean, there are numerous benefits, first and foremost being, you know, considering safety factors as it relates to the policy. A lot of these policies are specifically designed to slow down traffic, traffic calming measures in, in these projects, having pedestrian activity, having bicycle improvements, having transit, all of those things can lead towards traffic slowing down and.
Calming.
As they say, calming, having a calming influence. So there are also quality of life benefits to communities, communities that have a very active walking environment and bicycling environment, real estate values, they've shown in numerous places have increased. I did mention the safety. There's health benefit, it's obviously to a walking and a biking community, so I could go up and down the list, but there's all sorts of ancillary benefits ultimately if you do implement a complete streets program in your.
Okay, that, and just, so the complete streets program is, gives you some points toward the certification for Sustainable CT, and I guess.
Yes.
I know we're focusing on the complete streets because we're going to be voting on that, but I just, what is the benefits then of the Sustainable CT certification in particular?
The benefits are more of a pride in your community, that we don't get, as I said earlier, access to a lot of funds, but it's more of a, a report card on whether the community is achieving sustainability across the board for various departments and for various programs. During this process, we've literally had to reach out to every department and almost every staff person within the community to get a sense of the initiatives and the programs that we presently have in place as it relates to making the community more resilient and sustainable. So it's more of a, of a community pride type of program, but it also gives us a measure of where we are in, in terms of keeping the community moving in a, you know, an environmentally conscious, sustainable, and resilient, you know, pattern.
So, and I'll put my development hat on for that, so there's two other things that are, we shouldn't underplay or forget about here. The first is, a lot of the things related to Sustainable CT is an efficiency level conversation. It connects us to a number of different opportunities, but it also gives us an opportunity to look at how we do things in terms of providing information and communicating to the general public, you know, in terms of policy and methodology. Peter's done a lot of time, spent a lot of time actually compiling that information, so just simple things like, how do we reach the general population to provide information? We recognize that each department has their own unique way and unique contact list of individuals, and one of the things Sustainable CT has provided us is that opportunity to weave them, weave them all together. The other component is Sustainable CT is actually creating, while there's a small amount of money tied to the, the Sustainable CT concept, it, it is actually a box to check off, and I don't want to underplay that, it's a box to check off when you're applying for state or federal funds at this point, so it actually makes us more competitive as a smaller community when you're going up against these larger communities that are already doing some of these in principle. EPA grants require it, brownfield grants require it, brownfields are, help us to develop underutilized and potentially environmentally contaminated properties. So there's a lot of, especially at the state level, there's a lot of program funding that we get a little extra bet, bump in points for having this in process, and the higher than, the higher the designation, gold, silver, bronze, the more competitive we are. And part of that tying to the complete streets program is whenever you go after these responsible growth and transit oriented development grants, which the town of Weathersfield should absolutely be looking at once OPM releases that, RFP is tied to, do you have a complete streets policy? How do you tie to existing transit within your community? Are busways within a quarter of a mile of any development? Those are all huge things that help in terms of layering of funding for potential development projects and gaining access to state revenue. So I don't, I don't want to underplay the role that, even though it's definitely a pride thing, I agree 100% with Peter, it provides ample opportunity in other directions.
May I just comment? Thanks, Derek. I'm, I'm happy to see the complete streets policy come before us tonight. The deputy mayor and I attended some of the Weathersfield Bike Walk Committee meetings where we discussed some elements of the complete street program, and I think it's a benefit to our community, and I'm, I'm comfortable voting on this tonight because, you know, and part of that is because there are some built-in exceptions in case there are issues related to financing projects, environmental and issues, and also buy-in to communities. We want to make sure that what we're doing, making Weathersfield more walkable, bikeable, have busing or, or train, we do want to make sure our residents are comfortable with those projects as well. So I feel like this policy was very well done, and I appreciate the work that went into it, and I'm happy to vote on it tonight.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments at all? Or questions for Peter? Mine's not so much of a comment, but, you know, a question for either Peter or, or Gary, and Gary, you know, you've heard my concerns, you've read some of the emails that came in speeding along Main Street and some of the other streets that we have, you know, kind of since this lockdown has taken place, you know, there's, there's folks that are coming into town that aren't used to our streets, and they're looking to go to, you know, places like the Cove or down the Silvestine Highway, which they're not used to, that, you know, speed or speed limits are not a factor for them. Does, is there anything in here about, I know there's some speed control measures, I'm just thinking if there are, you know, bike or pedestrian pathways down Main Street as. or pedestrian pathways down Main Street as you go to a recreation area like the Cove, do they take into consideration that we already have sidewalks there, that, you know, we might not need a pedestrian lane where it narrows down there?
So the, if you recall, the Community Connectivity Grant that we received last year from Connecticut DOT, it's about $400,000 grant. It does include several new crosswalks. It does include some improvements to the intersection of Main and State, Main and Hartford, Main and Church, also, I think, Center and Main, and bike lanes as well. So the thought with all of those improvements, up and down that corridor, would lead to some additional traffic calming. The problem with Main Street, particularly north of Church, is it's just so wide. It's roomy, gives people the sense, not just, you know, cars, but also famous bus number 53, which we get constant complaints about. So we hope those improvements will assist in further calming traffic along that stretch. Obviously, as you get north of State Street, things start to tighten up and narrow down, but once you're coming out of the Cove, it widens right out. So, you know, complete streets also, which I didn't mention, you know, is look at narrowing pavements as well, where it's appropriate. They would be big costs with narrowing Main Street because of its length and its width, but nevertheless, maybe narrowing streets on other corridors in town is warranted as well. So those are all the kinds of things that would be considered. But we think this grant that we received last year, which we probably won't implement till next year, will hopefully, you know, maybe help with that. There's also a recommendation to review the speed limits again, so that's something we'll also be thinking about.
And I know Derek Gregor is looking at traffic calming. The road is very narrow, but it's also needs to be addressed in terms of the condition of the property, the condition of the roads. So there is kind of a high focus on doing that, and I know the police department is looking at different enforcement options that might be a little different than what they've done before. So it is a joint effort from multiple departments to look at, how do you address it? And I know we've had this conversation before, but excessive speed is an issue throughout many areas of town. I was watching Facebook posts the other day, and people were complaining of speeding on Main Street, and at the same time, people joined in saying, I know it's really frustrating, I'm having the problem over here. And someone else said, well, I'm having it over here. And then a fourth person said, I'm having it over here. And it makes you realize, it's throughout town, and you have to understand that there, you know, the bandwidth, how many officers can address the area at any given time. So you look at programming like complete streets to say, okay, how do we supplement the police force, knowing they can't be everywhere, or you, they have to be at the right spot at the right time, or we have to do selective enforcement, which can be very costly unto itself. So how do you, how do you provide that protection and safety for residents, for pedestrians? Some of that is as simple as striping the road and narrowing it, which causes a visual change in the driver, and some of it is through aggressive, more aggressive enforcement. So it's that combination that needs to be looked at. And I know Derek was looking, one of the areas was, we've just recently repaved Hartford Avenue, and he was looking at the line striping heading north to Hartford, and whether or not to actually start to narrow the road a little bit, just to control the amount of speed, because obviously, a paved area is more attractive to someone to go fast versus one that, where the road conditions might be a little shaky. So Hartford Ave might be on that top list coming out.
Can I just, can I just ask, living on Hartford Avenue and seeing the rate of speed that's increased, when are they line striping the road? When is that? When are they putting, because the crosswalk hasn't been painted yet, and the line that comes out at the stop signs hasn't been painted yet. And because there's no road markings by the stop sign, I've noticed a lot of cars not seeing the stop sign and not stopping there. Do we have a time on when somebody will be out to stripe all that?
Yes. It's supposed to be, and I kind of wish Derek was here, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be, no, because he and I were having this conversation, actually, he, line striping is one of the items on the agenda here. But, so he's planning on July, August is the target. Some of that is why I wanted the complete streets policy here, because we may be looking at some of those, the line striping would, the line striping would follow potentially a complete streets program. And Derek had shared some concerns, and again, unfortunately, he's not here, so I don't want to get too in-depth, but near the street across from Mikey's place.
North Brick.
North Brick, thank you. North Brick, heading north, we were talking about maybe narrowing, starting to narrow the road there. And actually, the road itself gets narrower as you head to Hartford. If you, if you're not driving it, you don't realize it until you start driving, and you, you know, all of a sudden, you realize it. But to match the line striping to fit a certain way, the concern is that you might confuse people and think they can't, they might not be able to park there, which is not actually the case. We're just trying to create a safer passageway. So I felt it was, it made sense to have the complete streets policy come up sooner, so that he can make some decisions as to how to move forward on the striping of that area. And I think, Peter, I'm not sure on the Community Connectivity. I know we're talking about some improvements right around Mikey's place in terms of parking, removing the boulders, so there's kind of a larger connectivity conversation that has to take place. But the answer is, I would say, within the next 60 days, I think the intention is to have it completely striped out.
Yeah, not having the crosswalk and the stop sign markings on the road has caused traffic to miss the stop sign. Thank you.
Yep, I'll note it.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Amy. Anybody else? Questions about this? Can I get a motion on the proposal or policy?
I'll make a motion to approve the complete streets policy as presented.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. And Dolores, that was Councilwoman Pelletier who made the motion, and I think O'Connor seconded it. Okay, thank you, guys. And then now, following up on Amy's question about line striping, we do have a bid on here for, I think it's town roads and Board of Ed parking lots. Gary, in the beginning, you said you would try your best to fill in for Derek, if you would.
Mayor, I think we put in 3B, which is the council discussion.
Oh, hang on. Yep, okay, yep. Let me go back up. Sorry about that. Thank you, man. Yes, for bids, 3B. I did have that written down, it's not on the screen in mine. Yes, I actually added the one for October, no, November 2nd as well on there, we might as well do that. Typically, we don't have that Monday council meeting before Election Day, correct? So, yes, just because summer hours, you know, things do get a little bit quieter in the summertime, as it pertains to town business. We typically reduce the number of meetings from two to one in July and in August. Just looking at the calendar, Gary and I were talking earlier about this. We meet today on the 15th. We would not meet again until July 6th. And then if we miss that July 6th meeting, we wouldn't meet again until the 20th, five weeks from now. So the proposal, or the plan was to meet just once in July, on July 6th, once in August, on August 3rd. We would miss the July 20th meeting and the August 17th meeting. And then looking at this calendar as well, we would also cancel the November 2nd meeting before Election Day. I had always questioned why we would do this, and, you know, I was always given, you know, if we need to call ourselves back in, we can always call ourselves back in if need be. Did anybody have any questions about those dates at all? Concerns? Okay, if not, I'd make, Gary, you know, we actually, we made the motion to open the agenda. I'll make a motion to revise the 2019, 2020 Town Council calendar to reflect the cancellation of the July 20th, August 17th, and November 2nd meetings.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that at all? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. And obviously, if something comes up and we need to be prepared, we will. One other thing I wanted to just mention about that, 17th, if we kept a meeting on the 17th in August, if there's any action that needs to be done before school starts, only a couple days later, we might need to take action on the, on the 3rd of August for any school-related issues. So, thank you, guys. I appreciate that. Now we can go back up to bids for line striping and parking lots. Gary?
Yep.
Yeah, that's of Derek.
Hard to fill in for an engineer, but thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the annual restriping of town roads and parking lots. We require, we're required to do this in order to promote safety for the motorists and pedestrians. And according with the manual on uniform traffic control devices, this is our, again, our annual request, $50,000 was approved in the budget for this year. And so this would execute a contract based off of a CROG bid that was done late, late fall, and, which bases the prices, and then the town actually uses their quantities. They analyze the number of units that they're going to require, and again, Atlantic, Atlantic Pavement is the lowest responsible bidder per the CROG bid. So we are requesting to award the contract to Atlantic Paving for the next 12 months.
Right. Mayor?
Yeah, Gary, I don't know if you would know this or not, but are we approving up to $50,000 in striping, or is it?
Yes.
Spend the full amount, or do you know how that's broken down?
Yeah, it is up to $50,000. So if, when all is said and done, when we turn out, staff goes out to determine where it's needed and where it's required, and again, come up with some calculations. So if it was $46,000, it'll be $46,000. So it should be up to $50,000.
And then the other question I had was, I recall, last time we did striping, if I'm correct, Derek said that the high school parking lots were striped with some specialized striping material that tended to last longer. And do you know if Derek's planning to inspect the school lots before they determine which ones are going to get restripped, or?
Yep. Yes. Staff will go out, staff has already done one round, they'll go out and do another to determine which will be, where the locations will be.
Thanks.
Yep.
Did anybody else have any questions, Gary, on this? No, pretty straightforward. Good to know that they will be doing some preliminary work, looking to make sure that we're not simply just going over lines simply to get to the $50,000. So, good. Can I get a motion, then, on this one?
Yes, I'll make a motion to award the contract to Atlantic Paving Markings, Inc., Prospect, Connecticut, in the amount of $50,000 to provide pavement marking services along town roads and town parking lots.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinances, resolutions, or appointments for an introduction? No. We'll move over to budget, our minutes, the minutes for the budget workshops. Didn't we vote on the, some of the minutes last time for the budget workshops, or were they not included in that one?
You had, yeah, you had different ones. You had some, but not all.
Not all?
Mayor, move acceptance of the May 26, 2020 minutes.
Do you want to do them all as one, or?
The only reason that I was thinking, I actually thought of that, but the only reason I was thinking is that if some people abstain from one or not the other, they want to make a correction on one. But it's up to you, Mayor. I'll do it on the whole thing if you want.
Did anybody want to, before we do that, anybody need to abstain or vote against any of the minutes, May 26, 27, 29, or the last meeting first?
Okay, we'll draw the previous motion, and I'll make a motion to accept May 26, 27, 29, and June 1st, all of 2020.
Motion's been made. Can I get a second? Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Gary, do we still have time for phone calls, phoning in?
We have three callers still here. I can go back through the list. Area code 860-690-4576, you're unmuted, if you'd like to speak again.
No, no further comments. Thank you.
And then 860-614-0759, if you'd like to speak again.
Hi, this is Rob O'Connor from 180 Main Street again. I just wanted to thank the council for passing the Complete Streets policy, and I also support the, looking at Hartford Ave for doing some kind of, I wouldn't call them bike lanes, there might not be enough room, but, but striping for at least 11-foot lanes, that'll do some traffic calming on that side of the, on that side of town. I live on Main Street, so I'm sort of an observer of the street dilemma there. And I think some traffic calming solutions, including the complete streets, will, will help, look at it as a, as a whole area, not just specific little pieces of it. And then, one of the other people who called in mentioned making cyclists, like we're, I think, I think a lot of people think that cyclists are a different breed of people, or something like that, that we don't drive cars also. So speaking as a motorist and a cyclist, I think there are a certain percentage of people, of people on bikes that don't obey the laws, run stop signs. I teach bike safety, so I'm always encouraging people to stop at stop signs and act like a car and act like a vehicle. So a concession to the point that some cyclists run stop signs, if the same person, we can see that a lot of people who drive cars run stop signs and disobey. And I think a certain percentage of people in all activities don't follow the rules and, you know, can be jerks. So it's just like people who call to meetings. Some people call in and are polite and not rude, and some are, and some are. So, but I do thank you for that, and I thank Peter for the great presentation, and Gary also. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. We appreciate it. Anybody else? Yes, you too.
And caller 860-563-6923, you're unmuted.
Good evening again. This is Robert Young, 20, Copper Moon Run.
This is Robert Young, 20 Copper Moon Run. I'd like to come back to the budget that you passed just recently, and it's really the capital improvement road fund. I recall where you had a road fund that you were funding for 1.5 million, then it went up to, went up to 1.8 million now, but then, in this particular budget, you reduced it by $100,000 to 1.7. Our roads are traveled by probably 100% of our population. You're only putting into the pot $1.7 million. You did put it, you had been putting in, well, for the last one or two years, 1.8, and now you cut it. And I think that, that is not, that is not a good move. We shouldn't be increasing the road dollars so we can have more tonnage of material put on our roads and take better care of them. Instead, here we are. We mortgage ourselves. We, we have lease payments all over the place in our equipment, fire engines, radio systems, street lights that have been financed. We have vehicles that we finance. We have all kinds of things that we finance, and we have other things that we started and never completed. And I'm thinking of the school building over, on Willow Street. They need new windows in that school building, and they probably will never get them, and they're going to continue to leak air both ways, whether it's cold keeping, cold escaping the building or cold coming in. Yet, here we are tonight, talking about some street policy and some more spending. Spending that our town planner, who was so involved in this whole project, and go look at Silas Dean Highway, he should be fired, absolutely removed from his position. He has wasted so much time on street policy when he should be out there pedaling and finding people to take over those empty buildings and those, and renovate those different buildings on the Silas Dean Highway and elsewhere in the town of Weathersfield. He should be gone, folks. Instead, he was wasting his time with street policy. Street policy that only a minority of our citizens are going to benefit from. Again, a lot of things you people spend a lot of time on are only for the benefit of a few minorities. The rest of us, we're going to pay the bill, whether it's through the local tax, or the state tax, or the federal tax. We're going to pay the bill for all of that. Now, we're talking about this walkway. I know a couple of weeks ago, you talked about the walkway, and really, this is part of the whole thing right here. The walkway was across Putnam Bridge, was sponsored or promoted by a small group of people, and that cost millions and millions of dollars. Now, the walkway from the street over in Glastonbury to the side of that bridge is going to cost many more millions. And then the street from Weathersfield side up to the bridge is going to cost more money for a minority group of people. And, you know, when are you going to finally do something for the majority? Let me tell you something, the majority is a third of your population or senior citizens who are struggling. They're struggling, and for years and years, they get no money on their benefits of having money in the bank. They get, they get extremely little increases in their pensions, if at all. Their social security, their company pensions are, are just not even keeping up. You heard some people talk at the budget hearing about how little they get in increases and how big of an increase you people have been voting for, and it's got to stop. You don't take care of your people. We should all, we shouldn't bother going to vote. Why vote for you people? You're only going to get in there and do whatever the heck you want. You're not going to do things for the town. And then I sit here tonight and I listen to Mr., Mr. Planner, he's talking about all of this great stuff that's going to go on, and one of the issues that I hear is when the public can weigh in on this. Oh, they can come to a meeting and weigh in. Let me tell you, I've gone to some of these meetings, and, and the special interest, fewer there who take over the meeting, and of course, the people who are listening to them are very happy to have them there. They don't want me there because I stand up and tell them what I think and, and how they should economize and how they should save money. But nobody does that in this country. We're in this state, we're in this town, and I'm not up with all of this.
Okay.
And, and you know, like I said, we have, we have projects that have been started that have never been finished. Go back and finish them, will you, Mr. Mayor? Good night.
We'll try. Thank you. Have a good night. Okay. No executive session tonight? Oh, actually, Gary, let me just check.
Do you have more?
Do we have anybody else?
Not as speakers. I don't know if Dolores has more.
That's right. I'm sorry, Dolores, you had a couple more letters.
Yes, we do. This is from Megan Hartland. Members of the Town Council, I'm writing today to ask again that the Weathersfield Town Council begin to take public action to rectify the systems in place that resulted in the murder of Anthony Vega Cruz. We are seeing folks speaking out across the country in protest of police violence, seeking a stronger standard of public safety outside of more guns, more surveillance, and more money to our police. Here in Weathersfield, I've been proud to, to see folks standing up and speaking out through the march, the march a week ago and a half, through, through some public statements and more, but what we aren't seeing is our public officials talk about the realities of our police department here, which has consistently ranked among the highest for racial disparities in traffic stops. We have a police chief who yearly hand, handwaves away report after report on this issue, and no public accountability from our officials pushing back on this. We instead get unanimous silence from our officials when a teenager is killed as a result of these stops, and unanimous consent to continue giving more money and resources to a police department that clearly has systemic racial issues. Now is the moment to take, to take a stand and make changes to create true public safety in our community for everyone. I am asking you to take a stand because it is the right thing to do, because I am consistently scared for people of color in our town. I'm sorry, I just lost my voice. In the same month that Anthony was shot and killed by one of our officers, I planned a trip for my Trinity College students to come to Weathersfield for dinner and to have a local escape room, to visit a local state escape room. About half of my students are not white, and my TA, my teaching associate, who is black and grew up in Hartford, and I had a conversation about who would drive students over. Based on my TA and what I've heard again and again, our black people who live and visit here, I'm suggesting that only white students should drive, and she immediately agreed. She has been pulled over here, so has so many of her friends and family. Less than a month later, a person who was their age and who looked like them died on the streets because this, his tags didn't match his plates. There are real and valid reasons why people of color do not feel safe in Weathersfield, especially when they are driving, and you must act to change that. I'm not saying it will be easy or fast, but your lack of public action is not acceptable. I recommend the following. Make public Weathersfield PD's Union Contracts and Use of Force Policies. These are available through FOIA, but I, should be readily available to every member of our town. Fire and replace Chief Sotran, who has repeatedly thrown, shown himself to be unconcerned with racial and ethnic biases in the policing practices of his department. Conduct an analysis of the current police budget and write a full report about the uses of town funding for policing and how we can reduce the police budget and the number of offices by 50% in the next three years in order to spend that money on social services to keep community members well. And fourth, commit publicly to review, doing and analyzing police policing procedures and making changes to stop the racial and ethnic bias in police traffic stops and other areas of policing in our community. Another one is from Casey White. The words shared in the recent statement from the mayor and by individual councilors prompted by the rising Black Lives Matter movement are insufficient without committed structural change. I am disappointed about that. This council, especially members who were office, were in office last year, have failed to take meaningful action as the body that funds and governs our police department. Body cams in an office for resignation are not enough. Neither is putting to a commission that lacks any authority in our town government. The Weathersfield Police Department has long been known by people of color in this area as well as in data for racial profiling. WPD also ordered Anthony Vega Cruz last year in traffic stop. We need big changes because police violence and surveillance of people of color and other marginalized communities is a big systematic, systemic problem. Over 20% of next year's non-education budget is for policing. By contrast, the combined budgets for our youth and social services, library, parks and rec, health department, and emergency medical services are less than half of the police budget. Why are we investing in a proto-military unit that intimidates and kills? In listening, listening to racial justice leaders, I am learning that reforms like body cams, racial bias training, and police commissions don't need just systemic changes. They can be helpful, of course, but they aren't enough to undo a profession in cultural bias in slave patrols and grim crow. We need less money going to the Weathersfield PD and less officers serving, period. I'd like to see the council reduce the number of officers by 50%, reduce the police budget by 50%, fire Chief Sotran, and reduce the police budget to correspond with any payout costs. Make public Weathersfield PD's Union Contracts and Use of Force Policies, remove resource offices from the high school and middle school. I hope to see real leadership from the representatives on the council. Words are cheap, but our community members remembers that Weathersfield town leaders continue to fail Anthony, his family, and the countless people of color who live and would visit here. Wouldn't it be nice to have some new articles about Weathersfield tripling its youth and social services budget, or even cutting the mill rate? Those are just some of the possibilities that could come from truly valuing human well-being in Weathersfield. Sincerely, Casey White. I have another one from Farah Asi Everson. Howdy there, Town of Weathersfield, elected officials and town manager. I'm writing today to remind you that last year, in Weathersfield, a teenager was shot in the head for a traffic stop. His name was Anthony Vega Cruz, and we, and he did not deserve to die. What he deserved even less, even less is for his killer not only to get away with the murder, but to blame Anthony for his own death. Weathersfield is in a, is a charming neighbor, is charming New England town, and with a racist police chief, and where racial disparities in traffic stops ranks amongst the highest in the state. This isn't an opinion, but a well-researched fact by the Connecticut Racial Profiling Prohibition Project. The silence of this, on this issue from elected officials following the killing of Anthony is alarming, is alarming on so many levels. The time has come to take a much closer look at the way our department operates and ask ourselves, do we really want to be known as a town that racially profiles visitor and residents? He was a resident. Small-town changes have big impacts. It's time to, for Weathersfield to be on the right side of the, of history of racial justice issues. I hope that leadership will consider real change and not just empty words on how Weathersfield is one of the kindest towns in, or non, in the state. Here are a few things that the council could look at into doing moving forward. Reduce the police budget. Over 20% of, of non-educational budget is for policing. Fire Chief Sotran. He has known time after time again to take care very little about the alarming racial bias in his leash-to-force practices. And three, make public Union Contracts and Use of Force Policies, and reduce the number of officers by 50%. Closure, closure for the family of Anthony Vega will be impossible, but small steps towards reform can, can at least prevent a tragedy like this, this one, from happening again. They, this is from Farah Asi Everson. Lindsay Jones said, I am writing today in solidarity with the many residents of our town and our larger community of Greater Hartford who have repeatedly expressed concern over racial profiling and police violence in our town. Over the past couple of weeks, our town has paid some lip service to the Black Lives Matter movement. Some members of the Town Council attempted a protest organized by local, attended a protest organized by local teenagers. Unfortunately, attending protests and making statements on Facebook does not equate to real systemic, systemic changes. In a moment when civil rights leaders are leading a charge to defund or abolish police departments, it is baffling to see councils, especially those who were on Town Council last year, when a PD police officer shot and killed 18-year-old Anthony Vega Cruz, continued to behave, behave as the cause for community conversations could ever be as effective as structural, structural changes. Next year's police budget is higher than the budgets for youth and services, social services, parks and recreation, health, recreation, health, emergency medical services, and the library combined. In fact, it is more doubled than combined budgets of those vital town services. As a resident of Weathersfield and the mother of two Weathersfield Public School students, I would like to see meaningful cuts in the police budget. The money they are, we are spending on the police could be used to enhance the lives of our children, our elderly residents, and our economically disadvantaged neighbors. Adding, adding body cameras, not enough for a town whose police chief shrugs off manual, annual reports showing that Weathersfield has one of the highest rates of racial profiling in the state. Meaningful structural changes that our council could take to show that the rest of the Connecticut town, that black lives truly matter in the town of Weathersfield. Is cutting the police budget by a substantial amount, firing and replacing Chief Sotran, who refuses to acknowledge to make substantial changes as a result of the racial bias. Act, making police Union Contract and the Use of police union contract and the use of force police policies publicly available without the need for Freedom of Information Act request. I look forward to seeing substantial changes and continued public support for the Black Lives Matter movement when protests of victims of police killings in other states are no longer trending and the real work begins. And that was from Lindsey Jones. Okay, this is from Christina Cattlefield. A year ago, Anthony Vega was shot in the head for a traffic stop. A year later, we have seen rhetoric about having conversations about racial disparities in Weathersfield and how to deal with it, specifically when it comes to having conversations about racial disparities. And yet, nothing has been done by the council or town manager, even in a time where Black Lives Matters is very front of the mind. The time has come to take a much closer look at the way our department operates and ask ourselves, do we really want to be known as the town that racially profiles visitors and residents? There were a few things that we could do. Reduce the budget. Fire the chief. He has shown time and again to take care very little about the alarming racial bias his department, his department force practices. Make public the contract, union contract, and use force and the force of policies. And reduce the number of officers by 50%. Thank you. And now, from Mary Lawrence, I have, Dear Mayor and council members, with recent protests in support of justice for George Floyd, I've become more and more concerned with police use of excessive force, especially rubber bands, pepper spray, tasers, particularly when directed at innocent people, journalists reporting on the scenes of events, legal observers, peaceful protesters, and children. As a Weathersfield resident, I'm also concerned with the Weathersfield Police Department's record of racial profiling and use of force. Do our police officers receive training in de-escalation tactics, diversity and equality, and equity? I'm writing to request that the council implement lasting structures, changes for our policing conclude. Making the union contracts and use of force policies public, creating and making public a robust body cam policy for our cameras that the police already owns, instituting an independent citizen review board, reallocating funding from police to social services and education to keep community members well, and making our community safe means making our community safe and welcoming for all people. And that was from Mary Lawrence. And the last one I have is from Emily Z. Zamoni. I have lived in Weathersfield for most of my life, and I hope to continue to live here for many years. It's difficult to find a town as beautiful and with as well-preserved history as this town. But there is a dark cloud over this town that must be addressed with more than words. That cloud is systemic racism, especially with regard to policing. According to the racial profiling policy project, Weathersfield Police Department is consistently in the top five of departments identified for racial disparities in policing. This is unacceptable. In the 18 years I spent growing up here, the seven years I spent visiting during and after college, and the two years since I've been back full-time, neither I nor my parents, nor my brother have ever been pulled over or made to feel unwelcome by the PD. We are all white. We have always felt safe in the town because we have been allowed to feel safe. People of color, especially black people, have not been allowed to be the same basic dignity. Anthony Vega Cruz moved here because he wanted safety too, and deserved it as much as my family wants does. But he did not get to experience it. Instead, he was murdered by the PD when running from a traffic stop, a violation which never warrants a death sentence. With what we already know about the PD racial profiling in traffic stops, would he have been pulled over at all he were white? Maybe not. Would he have been killed? Even less likely. It is long past time we stop allowing our police to act as judge, jury, and executioner for the black and brown residents and visitors to this town. It is impossible for me to reconcile my positive experience with this town with the unjust way residents of color continue to be treated by police, knowing that my race is shielding me from some of the same treatment. The town is not truly welcoming or safe. It is not welcoming and safe for all. I urge the council to reevaluate the funding the PD is, of the Weathersfield PD, to find where this money could be better spent addressing the root causes of inequality in Weathersfield. I also urge the council to terminate Chief Sotran, who has demonstrated time after time again to the refusal to terminate the officer who shot Anthony. His refusal to engage with critics and his unwillingness to address the problem within the police department that he commands. That is committed to maintaining to status quo of racial injustice in the town of Weathersfield. Thank you for your attention. All right, that's it.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that, Dolores.
Yep.
Actually, some of those I don't remember actually seeing come into the email, so we appreciate it.
Some of them were later, probably today.
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
No executive session planned, so motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I think you need a second there, Mike.
Oh.
Second.
Would you say?
Aye.
Did the mayor make the motion?
I made the motion.
Yeah, seconded it?
Yes. Yep. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 opposed nay? I say have it. We're adjourned.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Have a good night, everybody.
Yes.
Thanks.